First Monday in March, it is March 6th, 2023, 5:30. I call to order the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls. Our first item on our agenda is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, please take note that all members of the council are present. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I don't believe we have any additions or deletions. I have been informed that we have an audience member that will be coming under audience for some council action, so we'll just leave it that way unless anyone has anything to add. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the minutes from Tuesday, February 21st, special city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
No second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the minutes of the regular city council meeting on Tuesday, February 21st. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
No second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the resolution for transfers, payments, and claims in accounts payable. We have transfers going to the 101 general fund. That's coming from the 812 lodging tax fund, and that is $432.41. Accounts payable, regular City of International Falls claims, $920,635.49. Airport commission claims, $65,346.38. Airport annual projects claim, $731,651 even. Airport major capital projects, $16,745 even. And airport repayment to the city and county for major capital projects, $300,000 even. The total of accounts payable and claims is $234,377.87. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the transfers, payments, and claims in the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Going to audience, I believe we have an audience member that would like to come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We are, Lisa just found out this afternoon that we had applied, well, we need to change our application from the state or to the state for the liquor licensing because we do not have as robust of a kitchen, I guess, as they wanted. We don't have a deep fryer or anything like that, even though we have the lobby full of food and pizza, that they want to see like a more, you know, regulated kitchen for that type of license. So we need to, or we can, apply for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license instead and not have to do the industrial-type kitchen.
So did you?
Did I sound like I knew what I was talking about?
You did!
Because I have no idea.
You did fantastic!
It doesn't really make sense to me, so I guess...
So did you, did you apply for a restaurant license in the past? Or no?
No, did I? Yeah.
Yeah.
So on February...
This is your business, right?
I was going on no sleep for two weeks, though. What's that?
Please, Lisa.
So on February 6th, it was approved by the council for Rayanne to have a wine on-sale with strong beer, a 3-2 on-sale and restaurant.
Okay.
Which the restaurant is needed for her to be able to sell her goods, but she indicated they're prepackaged.
Okay.
So I was contacted by the state today and by the alcohol inspector that since the restaurant does not have a minimum of a deep fryer, I mean, you can't even have a pizza cooker, it has to be at least a deep fryer, that she could not have the wine on-sale and the strong beer and the 3-2 license. So they suggested that she apply for an on-sale license. I told them I had issues because the state can only, or the city can only have so many on-sale licenses. And she sent me all the information, that's out on the Minnesota website, saying that theaters are excluded from that count. So I contacted Rayanne, she applied for the on-sale, does not count towards the number of on-sale intoxicating liquors for the state, or for the city.
So would the, the cost of that liquor license be the same at the, so how much would that one be?
It's $800 more, which is fine. But it, to me, it's like you pay more and you can just have harder liquor and no kitchen, or you pay less and you have to have the big expensive, you know, restaurant, you know, well, you know, so yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing ways that I don't need to have a, I don't have a deep fryer.
Right. Well, I think you said like minimum of a deep fryer.
Yeah, understood, I'm just teasing. So, so the request before us is to approve a liquor license.
An on-sale.
On-sale liquor license.
And we hadn't done that originally because we were just thinking, well, we're only open from 6 to 11, let's keep it simple, and, you know, so otherwise I would have just applied for that first if I would have known that, so.
So before us right now is to have the Salty Jester LLC is applying for a liquor license. Do we have any issues with the paperwork or anything?
Nope, we have everything. She completed that part of the meeting tonight.
So Chair would entertain a motion to approve a liquor license for the Salty Jester LLC.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say, it's more of a comment on the whole licensing thing that we're all probably thinking. So she was willing to have wine and 3-2, but she doesn't have the right food, so she gets to sell hard liquor, so doesn't really need any food.
Right.
All right, just wanted to make sure I understood it all.
Well, and, and one of the things, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I do have conversations with a lot of people, but one of the things that you wanted to do as well is you wanted to have people be able to bring in their own booze anyways.
I did, I thought that would be much easier, yeah, but that...
Apparently not.
...either, so, yeah.
Okay.
Might want to open up at noon? No, just saying.
Yeah, I mean...
There is a, there is a base for that, I've heard.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience like to bring anything to the attention of the council? All right, we'll also have an opportunity later in the meeting if you'd like. We'll go on to old business. We have before us the second and final reading of the contract ordinance 981 for lift station number 15 improvement projects, accepting the low bid of $238,750 from TNT Construction LLC. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the second and final reading.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, and that is a license renewal for Due North Spa. It's a massage license. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilor Wegner. We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have some business that Chief Manasseh had sent to me. This is something that had gotten approved by a previous city council, but it fell through for one reason or another. I'd like Chief Manasseh to just come up, give us a little background on this.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So what I put in front of you was a memo asking to update a previous resolution from 2018. So when we purchased our new used aerial truck, we had put out a resolution to authorize disposition of surplus for a 1982 aerial truck, and we had done that with the idea of selling that to Little Fork for a discounted price. That deal at that time fell through due to a couple reasons. Space on their side was one of the issues, and then there was a clause in the resolution that I just recently found out that they were not very happy with, shouldn't say happy with, couldn't necessarily accommodate at the time. So I, I, their storage issues have come, come full circle now, and they have space for the truck, they're interested in the truck again, and we did take out that language in the resolution that they were questioning a little bit. So I am asking for approval to basically pass a new resolution, an amended resolution for the same disposition of the truck, declaring it surplus, allowing offer of sale to Little Fork Fire Department, and then also if that does fall through again, then authorizing sale a different, by different means if necessary. I do want to clear up one thing in my memo that I did not clear up. Administrator Berkstrom pointed it out to me, so I did have one line in there that says, "to make room for our new arriving tanker truck." And I just want to be very clear, the City of International Falls did not buy a new tanker truck. However, Rural Fire did buy a new tanker truck, so we will have another truck in our facility, and that's why we're trying to make room for, for that by getting rid of this holder truck. I would stand for any questions on this, but I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
If I buy that new tanker truck for Rural Fire, are they going to keep the old one then, too?
Yep. Yeah, we're going to run two tankers. So the idea is, just so everybody's on the forefront here, the 1982 aerial is currently in our South Falls Fire Hall. We are going to move our backup pumper, our old City One pumper, over to South Falls and keep both tankers in the main station over here. So that's something on most rural fires that we need is, is a second tanker truck, and we rely heavily on mutual aid to get that done. So if we have a big rural fire, we are often calling Little Fork or Captogma Loman for another tanker, so this was a move that we needed to do.
Okay.
Are you still covered for the PCA outage?
Uh, that part, or that's the part you wanted to get rid of, right? That was, so the language originally was that we would take the truck back to do the PCA outage, and they were uncomfortable with the idea of purchasing a truck and then for a week us going and getting it. I didn't realize that at the time, that was brought up to me at this time. They are, by the sounds of it, willing to do that end of it, so if they want to do that, I'm, I'm fine with it. And, and that's the advantage of keeping it in our area, too, is also with the mutual aiding efforts and stuff like that, it's still a good truck, it still runs great, and there's still a need for it from time to time, but keeping it in our area is a plus for us. And if they, if they do not want it this go-around, then, then we'd look for another local outlet to get rid of it. PCA is a big part of our, we don't want to leave them high and dry on that end of it, so that was a concern.
Excellent. Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, then Chair would entertain a motion for the resolution to authorize the sale of the surplus truck.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, we have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, consider renewal of the modem data plan contract with Stryker Medical for the four Physio LP15 monitors. Chief Manasseh, tell us all about that.
Yes, so we currently have four LifePack 15 monitors. Those are the devices we carry in each ambulance that interpret cardiac rhythms, 12 leads and 15 leads. The advantage of the data plan is currently, when we take those reads in the field or on a transfer, we can transmit that data to a doctor to interpret that data live in real time, so it's very beneficial for us. We, I looked back in my records because I was unaware of this data plan, and what had happened is in 2020, we had to do an upgrade from a 3G to a 4G data system on the monitors. I'm led to believe that we've been getting free data for about three years now, that something...
So why are we changing it?
They caught it in their system, so it's not just us. Every Stryker customer has gotten free data for about three years now, so they're, they're catching up, and instead of going backwards in retro, they're just moving forward with the data. So even though this looks like a big number at just about $4,200, it works out to about $29 per month per device, which is not really an unreasonable term for unlimited data. And again, this is crucial for us, when our paramedics and EMPs are in the field to have that read in real time to the doctors, this is, this is important, so I would ask that we approve it.
Does that data work from here to Duluth in the event that you need a...
Yeah, we've, we've never had an issue anywhere that it hasn't worked.
Excellent. Any questions for the chief on that? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion to do the renewal for the data plan.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Consider resolution, application for an exempt permit for Falls Memorial Hospital Foundation to conduct a raffle withdrawing on June 30th, 2023, at Rainy Lake Medical Center located at 1400 Highway 71, International Falls, Minnesota. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
It's a wonderful motion, Councilor Wegner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kaler, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the Minnesota Budget and Pay Equity Compliance Administrator Berkstrom, why don't you give us a little background on this nugget?
Actually, I'm going to defer to HR Director Sherri Stenzlin. She's been working directly with Minnesota Management and Budget Representative Dominique, so I will let Sherri give you the details.
HR Rep Stenzlin, how are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Excellent. Tell us about what we have before us.
All right, the city has been working on for quite some time with the state of Minnesota since 2020 to get our positions into pay equity compliance. It's required by the 1984 Local Government Pay Equity Act. They've been very kind in helping us. They could fine us, they could take away some of the local government aid, and they haven't done any of that. So we met with them a couple of weeks ago and worked out a plan through the course of 2023 where we would get into compliance with some of our female-only positions within the city. And that is part of what you will see in your packet of information. We negotiated with the local union, the 49ers, it affected a couple of their positions. We negotiated with them, came up with a plan. The plan, like I said, is included in your packet. So what we would do is implement it in installments, three installments, again, over the course of 2023, to try and spread that out, since this wasn't something that was budgeted for, and then we can budget for it in 2024.
Does anyone have any follow-up questions on this? All right, well, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution, getting us in compliance with pay equity.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion?
I would just like to ask, is, Ms. Mayor, is, just so people have an idea about the fines, the fines could be up to $100 a day if we didn't apply this, so when people start wondering about fines and costs, and we all know we need all the LGA we can get also, but...
Yeah.
$100 a day can...
Right, go up.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure the state doesn't exclude Saturdays and Sundays with that either, so that'd be a...
It's not working days.
Yeah, well, I don't want to have to get into that debate, so, I just wanted to add that, so people have an idea of the cost.
Well, and, and one of the things is, is this, this actually came up, well, more than three years ago. I mean, we've been working on this since the city attorney was on city council. That's when, the first time I think we had ever heard about it is, is at that time, and we had to go in to figure out what the game plan was, come up with, going with Flaherty and Hood. I mean, we, this has been a very long time coming, so I'm very happy that this is one that the city administrator can check off of her list of things that have to be done in the city.
This is half of that project, because this is only a part of the project of the whole compensation plan that Flaherty and Hood is working on with us.
Correct.
You know, we pulled this piece because we were at a point where Sherri could work directly, Sherri and I could work directly with the state to get and move this piece of it forward. We are still working with them to finalize the, the full schedule of...
Correct, but the, the pay equity part...
Yes.
Is now finalized. I realize that we have a long way to go for balancing and, and, and other pieces of it, but the pay equity part is, is finalized, and I'm kind of excited about that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or concerns? All right, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Sherri.
Thank you, Sherri.
To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any other business to come before us. Does anyone have anything to bring forward? All right, we'll go to the reports of boards, committees, department heads, city administrator?
I have nothing additional right now, Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
I do, and I won't make a habit out of this.
Oh, please do.
So in your report, if you go down to item number five, the home and garage, that's a typo, there should be garage there, at 1717 First Avenue, I did get signatures back from all three individuals. The reason there's three is Iverson was selling a contract for deed to Kempner and Bowler. So I did get all three signatures approving for a teardown date on or after, oh God, another typo, April 3rd, not March 3rd.
4-3?
4-3. Did I do that anywhere else? I don't think so. So I also reached out to the Fire Marshal Jared Baldwin and asked if he had received quotes or bids for this teardown. This is apparently an older one, so he had a bid from August of 2022, and it was the low bid from Travis Thompson for $4,950. He did reach out to Travis Thompson and confirm he is still willing to honor that bid. So I said I would bring it before the council to see if we can authorize a teardown after April 3rd.
Okay. Does anyone have any issue with that? If not, I would entertain a motion to allow the teardown of that building after April 3rd.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries 5-0.
That was it, unless someone has questions about my report.
So it's not about your report, but next week we have a land use and legislation meeting, and Councilor Wegner and I were just discussing before this meeting about the cannabis stuff, and we were just wondering where we're at on, on that and if there's any updates you can give, and maybe if you have some questions that we can move into the land use and legislation for next week.
So I have rough drafts of those already. Are you like looking for an update of anything that's changed with the legislature, or...
Any update you can give, period. We're just kind of looking for some information going into next week's meeting, that's all.
Yeah, and I can be there, too, if you want me to be there. I do have drafts. If I haven't emailed them to Betty, I will, and if you have anything else you want from me, just let me know.
Well, there were some questions that had came up at the league meeting that, that class that he was in, so I think that maybe you could take the lead on those.
Is licensing and fees is basically...
That's an option.
That's where we're going with that.
Yep, and I did...
And then identifying the places that this is being sold.
And I think that's the key piece that we were looking at before.
Yeah, officers.
Yep, so I have a draft for licensing, because licensing is an option. So I have a draft of it, and then, you know, just finding where they're licensed is pretty simple. You just, we'll just go around and find out if they're selling it, and inform that, inform them that they will have to be licensed after a certain time period, once it's adopted, that sort of thing.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Hearing none, we'll go to department heads. Any department heads have anything to bring forward? All right. City attorneys went through monthly report. Inside your packet, you have the fire rescue EMS monthly report. We'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward? I am going to probably call on Councilor Bowler only because there's some stuff happening at the airport with leaks. It was a kind of a bone of contention at the last month's meeting, and...
You were there.
I, I was at the meeting, but now we've also had, we also have had a follow-up leak that has just surfaced, so...
Yeah, we've had issues with leaks there, ever since they added on to, or it was a two, two-stage project on the airport building itself, and once that got done, we had a steady problem with leaks. And at our last meeting, the engineers told us that they had met with the contractors involved with, with that leak, with all the different phases of it, whether it's the roof or the interior damage, they met with them and they said that they would all be cooperative with coming in and fixing that leak come springtime. Well, we had another leak now, too, this last thaw that we had that they showed us, and we at the commission were at the point where we were pretty well fed up with the promises that they're going to come and fix it, so we did go, made a motion to hire an independent person to come in. He's a forensic person for roof, that would come in and give us the actual, what needs to be done to finish the job and get the leaks taken care of, and then we also did send a letter to them saying that if that doesn't cure it, then we're going to seek some legal action, because it's lasted so long now that I think it's time to, it's time to get that fixed. And then you get different, you know, lungs is wet, you know what happens, you get black mold and everything else in there, so we, we got to get this done right now, so we put the pressure on them a little bit there on that end of it, and I hope that it gets taken care, just because, yeah, it's a new building, it shouldn't be doing what it's doing.
Absolutely. All right, anybody else have anything to bring forward?
Just that the four of us were down at the League of Minnesota Cities training that I thought was good to go. I did go to the new elected official and get a little refresher, and me and Tim phoned out that Brooklyn Park has a problem with feral cats. Of all the things you think that people get called on down there, it's a new council person, and she's talking, and I said, yeah, she saw the things you read about, yeah, no, getting a lot of calls about feral cats. Must still be there from the old farm days. And, and I'd like, I got my, supporting the home team for tomorrow.
Yeah.
Law enforcement and fire are playing a hockey game to hopefully raise some money for Friends Against Abuse at 7 o'clock.
Excellent. I, I, Walt and I ended up taking different classes than the other two counselors took, but the, the classes that we took...
Go ahead, advanced.
Advanced. Yeah.
So we, we, we took, we, we didn't take city government 101, we took 201. So we took, we didn't take city government one-on-one, we took two-on-one.
Yeah, maybe you should.
So we ended up having, really, we had a comedian, which I find kind of bizarre that they hired a comedian to have a discussion with us on Saturday morning. However, it was on how to interact with people in your community when they're mad, how to, and it was a really, really good class. One of the other things that this gentleman does is he helps cities in the event that we wanted to do some long-term planning and visioning. I don't know if that's necessarily something that we want to hire out, but I do know that that's something that we need to do. And we historically have done that, but I don't think we've actually had a sit-down of long-term visioning and planning since the pandemic, so just something to keep in your mind, we'll have discussions about that at some committee of the whole meetings. There's nothing any immediate or anything like that, it's just, it just piqued my interest because I remember we kind of used to do that, and then the pandemic came up, and then we don't do that anymore. So that's something that I really think that we need to look at in the future, if not the near future, with all the things that the city has on its plate. The other thing was last Monday, I testified in front of the Capitol Investment Committee at the House of Representatives on lead water lines. If you remember, the Public Works Director was in here and was discussing PFA funding for lead water lines. Well, apparently, our, our application has made its circulation around at the state, and it really looks promising for International Falls and Two Harbors. So they had asked myself or Two Harbors if they could testify on the lead water lines to go into conjunction with working on our sump pump removal of I and I and all of that stuff that anyone who's ever sat with me on the Public Works Board understands that I can't remember any of the terminology or words, and I really don't care for that much. However, I did testify, and it seemed to be well-received. It is very obvious there is a disconnect between the metro and rural Minnesota on utilizing those funds. Apparently, we don't have lead lines up in northern Minnesota, they're only in economically distressed areas of the metro area. So apparently, they're still looking at that.
Is there money for the sump pumps part of it?
Well, and that's the key, there's no money for the sump pumps, but in the event that we have to go in and do lead water lines, that is the time where we can get funding for both the city and for the residents to tear that up. You fix one, you fix the other, you put them in at the same time. So that's one of the leads that our Public Works Director and Bolton Mink has looked at, and so I've jumped on board of that to try to help any way we can.
Good.
The next thing is, we, as a city council, about an hour and a half ago, did do a walkthrough of the third floor of Bacchus. I was really blown away by what the opportunity is there for us. And the last thing is next, or not next week, this week, on Thursday is the League of Minnesota Cities Day at the Hill. I'm going to be going down there, I'm going to be meeting with, well, he brings literature and everything back with him. So we, I'm going to be going down there next week, and I have a handful of meetings set up, one of which is with Senator Housechild, so I will, I will be going down there for that. Besides that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything?
Do you have your, when's your State of the City coming?
Oh, absolutely wonderful. On Wednesday of this week at six o'clock Central Standard Time on all social media outlets from the mayor's social media page, the city of International Falls's social media page, we will be sending a copy of this to KCTV. We will also be sending a copy to our local media events outlets. The State of the City, which will be this Thursday, or this Wednesday at six Central Standard Time. It is going to be pre-recorded, and I know that there is at least two city counselors here that don't want it to be pre-recorded because they want to see me stumble over my words, they want to see it live.
Yes.
Not happening.
Well, now they can say you just doctored it up, I'm just trying to, you're already stopping Domino's.
I, you know what, I want to, you made a point, now I'm going to talk longer, it's on you. You know, so social media has really demonized the city on a handful of things recently, and the reality is, we fall into a position of, it doesn't matter if you do something or you don't do something, you're going to get blamed for it. And I am more than willing to sit up here and take the heat for some of the best people I've ever worked with, and that's going to be our city police officers, our city fire department, including the fire marshal, the city administrator, the administration office, and the decisions that this council makes. We're not doing it for fun, you know, the thing of it is, is there are some really tough decisions that we have to make, and we have people that are paid to do their jobs. And we can, we can waffle on a couple of things, and, well, why did you do this? Because there was either public safety was involved, or it was because it was that person's job. It's, it's not even a crappy deal, it's a good deal. We are here to make sure that International Falls is a better place, and I'm going to stand up for every one of our employees when they do their job. So if I continue to get thrown under the bus for some of the best people in our community, I will do it. But I don't know if I can take the heat for someone not getting their pizza at Domino's. I don't know if I can take that heat. But no, we've had, we've had some turmoil in our community, but the reality is, it's, it comes down to people doing their job and doing a very fine job at that as well. Pizza thing threw me right off. All right, we'll go to audiences, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? Go to correspondence, we have International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Visitors Visitors Bureau meeting information from January twenty twenty-three. Coochin County Board of Commissioners draft minutes for February twenty-eighth, and our next regular city council meeting will be on March twentieth at five-thirty. This meeting is adjourned.
So will that air at six?
If I haven't sent you.
I don't know that. We're going to get it to them.
I'll just resend it again.
Okay.